Go ahead and call the meeting to order, if you would, please rise.
I'll let you have that case.
If you would, please pray with me. Father, thank you for this day, and Father, we lived up to the city of Odessa. Father, we thank you for the many blessings that you've given us, and Father, we just pray that you would put your hand of protection over our police and fire and all our city employees, and Father, we lift up those communities that have lost police officers, and Father, especially the four-month-old baby. Father, we just lift them up and pray for those communities. And Father, thank you for this day, and we just ask for your wisdom as we make decisions for our city. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Councilmember Graff will lead us in the prayers, I mean, in pledges.
If you would join me in the pledge to the Texas, to the United States flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all and all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
If Mike Bates could come forward.
He's not here.
Oh, he's not? Okay.
I'm supposed to pick it up on?
Sure. Come on up, and I'll meet you at the podium. Right here, I'll go ahead and make the proclamation. Where is the white cane, which every blind citizen of our state has the right to carry, demonstrates and symbolizes the ability to achieve a full and independent life and the capacity to work productively in a competitive employment. And the white cane, by allowing every blind person to move more freely and safely from place to place, makes it possible for the blind to fully participate and contribute to our society. And every citizen should be aware that law requires that motorists exercise appropriate caution when approaching a blind person carrying a white cane. And the city of Odessa also calls upon employers, both public and private, to be aware of a utilized employment skills of our blind citizens by recognizing their worth as individuals and their productive capacities. And in the city, throughout public agencies and with the cooperation of the assistance of West Texas Desert Chapter of the American Council of Blind Texans, along with Helping Hands Support Program, we can look forward to a continued expansion of awareness of blind and visually impaired persons. Now, therefore, I, David R. Turner, by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Odessa, hereby proclaim October 12th, 2016, White Cane Day. Throughout the city, I encourage all citizens to acknowledge our citizens who use the white cane and dog guides as they continue to develop their skills and ability to live their life to the fullest. Congratulations. Thank you. Microphone.
I would like to thank everybody on behalf of Mike Bates and all of us that are blind. We thank you for this proclamation, and we will strive to do our best in our community so to let people know that we are active members of our community, and thank you so much.
Hang on, there's one picture. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll open a public hearing to consider the approval of a request of the city of Odessa owner, LCA. Mr. Brenner.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The city mailed out 15 notices related to this case. We did not have any notices returned. We did not receive any written protests, and we did receive two written approvals related to this case. The property involved in the request is located in the vicinity of intersection of East Fifth Street and Jackson Avenue. This site is currently zoned Central Business District Two, and it is occupied by vacant retail and commercial use buildings and vacant land. And land use in this vicinity does consist of office and retail-related development. The asset in this case is the city of Odessa, and we do own the property, and the purpose of this zone change request to Central Business District One would facilitate the development of the city's proposed conference center and related hotel and parking facility on this property. The request to rezone this site from Central Business District Two to Central Business District One would not be contrary to the city's master plan or land use plan. It would not be contrary to the proposed downtown master plan. And this request is not out of scale with the needs of this neighborhood and the city, and this will align the zoning with the proposed long-term use of this property. The Planning and Zoning Commission did give unanimous approval to this request, and the planning staff does concur with this recommendation for approval, and we'd have to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so at this time, we will open up the floor for any public comment on this agenda item. If you would, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, we'll open a public hearing to consider the proposed EZ Rider bus routes. Mr. Stevens.
Good to be canceled, Mayor. Thank you for having me today. What we have here is some proposed route changes affecting Odessa beginning, like to begin sometime in November. Over the last couple of months, we've vetted us to the EZ Rider, the Midland Odessa Urban Transit District Board. You have three different routes that are being affected. Route One, Three, and Five, and each of those cover disparate parts of the city of Odessa. You have them for three different reasons: safety, on-time performance, and trying to increase ridership. Route One is being rerouted. It's going to serve the same area. It'll be the same capacity, the same timeframe. It'll just be a little bit different. We won't travel down Snyder Street on Route One. We'll redirect that to the interior away from Snyder Street for safety reasons. The on-time performance is for Route Three. We have an inbound and outbound on the University of Texas Permian Basin. That one's always been hard for us to stay on time, so what we propose to do is eliminate one of those, eliminate the inbound trip to recover some time on this route so we can stay on time. That's one of the important things when running bus routes is, one of the one things we can't control is on-time performance, and it's usually an indicator of how well the route will do. This one's suffered a little bit over time. The more complicated one that we're proposing changes to is Route Number Five. Route Five has two pieces to it. We proposed to move it from on Everglade Maple up to Forty Second. We only have one other route that serves Forty Second, which is a real large, what we call a, I can't figure the word real quick, it's a trip generator. So it's a really large potential trip generation on Forty Second, and Route Two is the only other route that serves that one. Route Five has historically been one that's, you know, suffered a little bit for trip generators, and we're trying to see if we can do things to it in small ways to increase the ridership there. Route Five has a second piece, which is a section on Golder West County Road. So what we've done, as we began this process, we took a look at, we did surveys on the bus. We asked people what they thought. So this began in early spring, April through May, and then after that, what we did is the staff conducted what's called a boarding and lighting study. And as they go along each route, they count the amount of folks come on and off and try to indicate where the trip generator's at. So with those two pieces of information, we kind of put that together and come up, the staff comes up with recommendations to change the route. That's where we are today. It's already gone through the board a couple of months ago, went through in August and September with public hearings, and so we at least want to have one public hearing, you know, with the city of Odessa to make sure that we've vetted it properly and have asked people their opinions about the proposed changes. With route changes, they shouldn't happen too often, but when they do, we need to have some kind of input feedback process to get that happen. So that's what we have today, Mayor and council. Thank you.
Any questions from council?
What kind of feedback have you gotten from the routes?
It's been mostly positive, Councilman Garner. The couple of things that folks want from us is something that we really can't do at this point in time. They want extended routes, they want the routes to be longer during the days, they want more weekend coverage, and they want, as the city grows, they'd like to see the route expanded in the areas where the city's growing. So those two things are really difficult to do without, you know, a real in-depth comprehensive study, which is something that we've talked about at the board level, and I've tried to include the Metropolitan Plan Organization to see if we can find ways to bring some consultation here to do a more comprehensive study. But for the most part, they're really positive. Our on-time performance is tracking really well, and our ridership is steady. I think most folks would like to see extended routes and more time.
And that takes...
A lot of money. Yeah, a lot of money.
Until I give you a plug, so you can plug the council for a little more money.
It takes a little bit of money, but I think we may be prepared to have something for your review, hopefully within this next calendar year. I can't promise a specific day, but it's on my radar screen to have, you know, the routes evaluated where we can make some good choices. We can make some good choices about where you want to take your routes in the city of Odessa, because it is a growing city, and we need to try to pay attention to that. Yes, sir. Thank you.
I'd like to ask, has there been an incident on Snyder?
On Snyder, what they tell me, there have been small incidences where either folks that want to catch the bus are deterred from that because they think there's some, you know, activity there that keeps them from feeling safe. So nothing that pops out in my head right away, Ms. McNeil, but I think from the staff and some passengers, there's been just a little bit of concern about maybe some safety there, but nothing that I could tell you right away off the top of my head that stands out to me. But that was just what we gathered from the surveys, and some of the trip along that route was really low. Some of the, we had a stop there, and it was really low, and it was a recommendation from staff.
How far are you moving that route over? I know where Councilwoman Bill's going to.
It bypasses Snyder and Montehans as it runs east-west, and it goes a little north to the interior, so it actually covers the food bank. We're covering a couple of places that we normally couldn't get to: the probation office and the food bank. So we're coming along, instead of coming along Montehans and Snyder, we're going to go north up Dixie, come across Magnolia, and then come back around, gosh, I forget what street that is, Texas Street, to get back on route. So we're just going to bypass that, come into the interior to cover a couple of other trip generating areas. So we'll still cover that area. They'll have, you know, that block in there doesn't typically get any ridership. There was very low ridership there, and the folks that we surveyed said they didn't mind connecting, walking a few blocks either east or west to get to the stop.
I might suggest that you get with the city secretary and get Ms. McNeil's address and send her where the route went before.
Yeah.
And where the proposed is. I think you'll, once you see it on paper, you'll kind of see where, I think it's probably a better, it probably suits people better, and I think from what we've had heard from that route, there were, most of the concern was for some of the riders that ride all the time, they weren't real comfortable catching the bus there, they would have rather caught it at another spot than where they were at. But I think if you looked at the route and you go on the area, you'd probably, you'd probably agree with that.
Please, just show us real quick. I'll start to you.
The red part is the proposed change there, and the yellow is the current inbound and green is the current outbound.
My question would be that the people living in the vicinity of Snyder, now how far do they have to walk in order to catch the bus?
It actually gives them more opportunity. It just came straight through, so with deviating it over to the north and coming back down south in loop, you contact more trip generators, and you're actually giving them more opportunity to catch the bus, and you're giving them more opportunities. If you're on Snyder Street, you'll have to walk east or west, two blocks extra to get to it.
Two blocks.
Two blocks. And it depends exactly where you are, but the average is two blocks, either east or west. And the folks that we surveyed understood that that would be the option, and they didn't have an issue with it, at least the folks that we had surveyed or answered the survey.
So did you poll people on Snyder?
We did not poll the people on Snyder. We, as Mr. Gardner stated, the folks that currently ride the bus on that route. So I don't know, there may be some of those folks that are residents, but the folks that currently ride the bus or have ridden the bus for the past, and at survey time, April and May of this past year, along that route, we're surveyed and asked how they felt about changing that route, and the feedback was positive.
Okay, other questions from council? This is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll open up the floor for any comments on these changing of the bus routes. If you would, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close this public hearing. Thank you very much, Mr. Stevens. Next, we'll move to ordinances. Consider amending Article Six dash five of the City of Odessa Code of Ordinances. Mr. Long.
Thank you, Mayor. This upcoming ordinance and the next two are really related, and what they allow the city to do is to take advantage of state law, which gives the expanded powers to the cities upon the designation of something as being a nuisance. So what this does is take the existing law that we have for, in this instance, high weeds and rubbish and other debris, and allows us to declare it a nuisance. We're not changing anything other than that for this particular thing.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Second.
Motion and second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, remove from table and consider amending Article Three dash ten of the City Code of Ordinances. Do we have a motion?
I'm going to make a motion, remove from table.
Motion and remove from table, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion on removing from table? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Long, would you like to say?
Yes, this is applying what I just spoken of to dangerous buildings. It's taking the buildings that are dangerous and officially declaring them a nuisance, like I said, for state purposes.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And motion and second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Yeah, and I would like to talk to somebody about an unsafe building I just discovered.
Good thing. Next, remove from the table and consider amending Article Three dash fourteen of the City of Odessa Code of Ordinances. Do we have a motion to remove it from the table?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, removing from table, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Now on the table, Mr. Long.
Thank you, Mayor. This would apply the nuisance designation to unsafe signs.
Okay, do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Number six, consider amending Article Four dash six of the City of Odessa Code of Ordinances entitled Peddlers and Vendors. Do you want to table?
I would suggest that we have, Mayor.
Okay, do we have a motion to table?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And motion and second, all in favor, tabling, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is consider adopting the Downtown Odessa Master Plan. I believe we're going to table this, I...
Make a motion, we table this. Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, tabling, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next, under resolution, remove from the table and consider the amendment of economic development agreement with FMC.
I'm going to remove it from the table.
Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor of removing the table, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Brennan.
Well, we discussed this in the briefing session earlier, and our role here tonight is to hopefully amend the contract with the FMC company, an agreement that was amended unanimously by the Odessa Development Corporation at their September meeting. Their intent is to use their wholly-owned subsidiary, Surface Integrated Services, as the job creator for this project. The jobs are not changing locations, not changing salaries or numbers on any of those jobs, it's just going to be under a different name, again, wholly-owned subsidiary of FMC at the location that was agreed upon earlier. So I wanted to remind the council, of course, we talked about it earlier, of the capital investment of over $13 million for this project, and it's 47 existing jobs and 10 new jobs for that, with a payroll of over $3 million, so.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Brennan? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you all very much.
Number nine, consider First Amendment agreement with the Midland Odessa Urban Transit District. Mr. Long.
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution would allow the agreement with the, the current agreement that we have with McDonald Transit to be adjusted to provide additional funds for its employees pursuant to a request by M W P D.
Mayor, you had asked in the briefing if Midland had taken action, they actually will not take action on it until the 25th.
Okay, thank you for that information. Any questions for Mr. Long? If not, we'll entertain...
I do.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
We had a contract with McDonald. I think this contract is what, three, three years old now?
Two years old.
Two years old now, okay.
Three years to go.
All right. In that contract, McDonald is supposed to provide us with a general manager, and that general manager is their employee, not ours. They're providing his salary, we don't even know how much, they're providing his travel and his other needs. They give him a travel allowance. In this new contract, we will be giving him an additional travel allowance. I really have a problem with that. To me, if his employer doesn't feel that he needs more travel allowance, then we have no business giving him more. Let me paint a little picture for you, and again, I'm going to use our city manager. The council is not the employer of anyone working for the city, other than the city manager, the city attorney, the city secretary, and two of our municipal judges. So all of those people are under the authority of the city manager, they're not our employees. And my feeling is if one of our department heads were to feel like they were not being paid sufficiently for their travel, didn't agree with what Richard was doing, and that person came to the council and wanted us to overrule our city manager, to me, that would be wrong, because they're not our employees. It's Richard's duty to provide for them. In this contract, it will also change something that has been a forever standard. The M W T D provides the city manager with a company vehicle, just as Richard provides our city employees that need one, a city vehicle. Now, that will be changed where a travel allowance will be given. Also, throw in the phone allowance. I don't think we have any business amending this contract. It's not our employee, it's not our company. And I have another big problem in the fact that we're under the rules of FTA, which are Federal Transit Association. If we didn't have FTA, we wouldn't have money, grant money, to provide public transportation. They have procurement laws, they're different from the city, they're different from the county, they're different from the state, they're FTA procurement laws. When you go to change a contract, you can have a change order. Now, if it's a permissible change order, fine. If it's a cardinal change order, then it's not allowable. You'd have to go out for bids, and you can risk losing your FTA funding, and I feel very, very strongly about that. I don't want to do anything that could possibly affect our funding. I just don't think that this board, excuse me, I'm not through, I just don't think that this council has any position, any right to change this contract. I know board members want it changed, but that is not in their line of duty. They've overstepped their boundaries, and since Midland is not voting on it, I would suggest that we table this, and we contact FTA to make sure that this would be a permissible change.
Okay.
I'm going for a question and make a motion. We approve as presented?
Have a motion to approve it, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I oppose.
The vote is three to one. Okay. Next, consider proposal for Starbright Village sponsorship naming rights. Mr. Patton.
Did it name, what, whole team with it, first basin team? Starbright Village is grown to a huge attraction for West Texas and southeastern New Mexico, the whole Permian Basin is, and it's now a traditional holiday event, something that the city's very proud of. And we topped out our attendance levels last year at over 130 documented visitors, 130,000 documented visitors to Starbright Village, and that was closed two days because of COVID. So we have big, beautiful ideas coming, and we've already got some big displays ordered on the way, and this year's, we're going to premiere a couple of new displays and an animated Christmas tree, and I don't want to give out all the surprises yet, and I hope it works when you flip the switch, Mayor. That's going to be very...
Please.
...good. Contrary to the past, Mayor, a couple of times. But we, this year decided that we would make official, we've had a lot of inquiries through the past about people co-sponsoring with us and being a partner. We made it official this year by doing an RFP, and the RFP went out for distribution. We advertised, and we got a proposal from First Basin, great proposal, the committee, we had a subcommittee advisory board and staff to review all the, the, and to know their proposal. Then we took that to the Park Innovation Advisory Board. They looked at the proposal very closely, had a discussion about it, and were quick to recommend that the city enter into a proposal to give the naming rights to Starbright Village, to share with the city of Odessa our success. I remember one of our premier events, something that I've been involved with since its inception. I remember when we walked about a couple hundred yards and turned around and it's gone from there to about a... It's gone from that to about a four display, so now we have over seventy-five to three hundred thousand lives, so it's grown throughout the years, and really quite an event for us. I'm very excited. Today, we've got, First Basin staff is here. You don't want to say anything?
Sure. Greetings, council members. I'm Sean Colbert, burn the CDO of First Basin Credit Union. We have a long and proud history of community involvement, and not only this community, but the others that we serve, and we particularly gravitate towards family-oriented events. And for you of those who have gone to Star Rock Village, nothing is more family than Star Rock Village. And we feel that we, along with the city and the progressive thinking of the city, can make it even bigger and better with, of course, the affiliation. We feel we have a pretty solid name in the community, and then the financial resources will help tremendously. And last but not least, but the long-term relationship is important to us, and I know that in the past, it's been a one-to-one deal every year, and we feel that if we can enter into a longer-term arrangement, then the stability will allow Steve and his team to look further than one year out. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
We appreciate what you're doing, and believe you will get lots and lots of advertising, because lots and lots of people drive through there and walk through there, more than once.
Thank you all very much.
We have a little gift. You got it on mic?
Sure. That's, sure, no problem.
Counsel.
Just don't give one to Larry.
For after.
Gratitude.
Thank you.
That's right. Just what you need.
I appreciate it. I appreciate your support. Thanks, Sean.
And there's an exclusive First Basin Credit Union pin just for your desk.
Just for my desk.
And you expect him to put that on his desk?
You know, well, I would, wouldn't I?
And I'm sorry to say, there is nothing inside the can.
That was my question. You know, I've got these cans that you take, you know, you open them up, and there will be a little gift inside, like, you know, some green stuff? No?
Not this time.
Okay.
Would you mind? We have a...
Sure. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate you all.
Thank you all.
No, Steve, you can't ask for money.
I was going to say, I remember.
Did you get canned?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Good job.
If not, I'd give somebody, I know Dewey wouldn't mind sharing.
The basics of the agreement itself, it is for a three-year term. For the first three years, it's twenty-five thousand dollar contribution per year. Then there's a second term for a six-year total term. It goes up the next three years to twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars per year as far as the donation and the naming rights. And like I said, the Park Migration Advisory Board reviewed this, looked at the terms of the, the Odessa Parks Foundation would be involved with the recipient of the funds. Additionally, the contract would be written such that the funds will be designated to go towards improvements to be made to Star Rock Village, specific to the displays and not to any operational costs. We'd use that for improvements to the displays themselves.
Agreed.
Right. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, Steve. Thanks for all your work.
I was using the thing, and that's a fun thing, and we've already started.
Great.
Wow.
Thank you again, First Basin. Appreciate it much.
Thank you all.
For your call.
This is a resolution.
Oh, this is a resolution?
I thought the cake got in, come.
That's my first cake. You know, Mayor just mentioned to me that he really, really does not want to repeat of his first year as mayor with Star Rock Village.
Oh, that ice.
None of that long distance, you know?
No. Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all very much.
Thank you all.
Next, under miscellaneous, we do not have anything to appoint. Okay. Next is consider acquisition of Lot Two of the North Point Eight One. Mr. Long.
Thank you, Mayor. This is actually the property that the Rio Theater sits on, and in our analysis of downtown, we felt that it would be beneficial for the development of it, particularly with the amenities that we have coming in, to remove any of the ice wars or things that would be unadvertising. And the Rio Theater has passed its better days, and we are proposing to purchase it for sixty thousand dollars and be able to clear it up to something useful for the benefit of downtown.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Long?
Is that to, is that up to sixty thousand? Is that correct?
Yes. It's not to exceed.
Yeah. Sixty thousand.
Okay. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion in second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We do have one citizen that would like to comment. Mr. Penn, I believe.
Yes, sir.
If you would, please come, apologize. I want to make sure I pronounce that right.
That's right.
Okay. He lives at twenty-one thirty-five West Second. He has something he would like to say. And Mr. Penn, let me tell you before you start, we can't actually answer anything because it's non-agenda, and so, but we'll be happy to give you three minutes to talk about it.
Well, I just wanted to make it...
If you get to the mic. We have to report everything.
Well, I just wanted to make this known. I've got a little bit of paperwork I want to give you here. I've been in this yard for forty-five years, and the city's never said anything to me about anything other than my weeds. And I've taken care of my weeds and such stuff as that, since I get the deal. Now, they're on me about everything. I had some old trucks out front, and they've been there for a long while.